She may have it muted. But we have to have her video. We have to be able to see her, don't wait for the quorum. Yeah, I know, I know. But I'm thinking Stephen may be online too. Who do we have online? It's just Gail. We only have four right now. So we don't have a quorum. Stephen, there's Gail. Hi, Gail.
We're needing one more, Gail, for quorum.
Nope. Well, we don't have a quorum, we can't transact any business, can we share information? We can update them on the ordinance. Yeah. Why, and I went by and looked at it. I didn't see specifically why they wanted to demolish it. Oh, I thought it was a slab house. Looks like a slab. It didn't look like there was a basement to it, but I may be wrong. Waverly, it's just up behind, is it the auto parts? Yeah, because it, it looked like, when I went by it and I looked around the backside, and it looked like it was a slab house. That's the reason I couldn't figure out what the situation was. Yay! We have a quorum now. Thank you, Alan. On Waverly. There's what? Well, that's... Yeah, well, that's the reason I was wondering if, you know, it wasn't slab or not. Yes. Close to them. You want to go ahead and get started, we can bring the discussion back. Gail, just so that you know, for our quorum, you do have to keep your camera up, so that we can be legal. You have to be on camera. Yeah, she said okay. She's green, so... Gail, are you by any chance on mute on your computer or your phone? You may have to look at your volume or your microphone setting. Just so we can hear you vote. I don't know, is that legal? Rachel? Or shake your head? Visible. So, Gail, if we can't hear you, just shake your head. Okay, I'm going to call this thing the order, otherwise we're going to be crazy. Okay. This is the October 12th, 2021 meeting of the City of Jefferson Historic Preservation Commission. My name is Donna Dietz, I'm the chairman of the commission. Please turn your microphones or your cell phones off, and we'll go from there. Let everybody introduce themselves. Intiff?
Tiffany Patterson.
Michael Berensen.
Alan Wheat.
Laura Ward, City Council, Ward 2.
Rachel Senzi, City Staff.
Carly, City Staff.
And on the video, we have Gail Jones. You can, you're here.
Michael Schein, City Reporter for the News Tribune.
Thank you. The city code authorizes nine regular members, a quorum of five members is present. It's necessary to conduct business. I declare the quorum is present. Are there any members that are disqualified from voting on any agenda item tonight? Okay. I got you. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as printed or amended? All in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry.
Did we want to amend?
Duh. Forgot about it. And yet, can I, as chair, amend it or add to it?
I'll amend it.
Okay, thank you.
By adding the landmark awards, right, is what we want to discuss other business?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we add that to our agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Tiffany. We have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda by adding the landmark award discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Gail, yes? Okay. Motion has carried. Also, can I have a motion to, I'm sorry, the motion carried, now we have to have a motion to approve the agenda itself as amended.
So move.
Second.
Tiffany, Mike? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Get through all of this. Okay, and you have the minutes in your packet. And may I have a motion to approve the regular meeting of September 14th minutes?
Second.
Okay, Alan and Tiffany? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Gail. Motion has carried. Item of business: demolition review under 100 years old, address 623 Waverly Street. Rachel?
Yes, thank you, and I think you, yep, thank you for pulling up the PowerPoint. We received an application for demolition for 623 Waverly Street. It's kind of off of Missouri Boulevard, kind of the St. Mary's Boulevard area. It has a construction date of 1935. Go ahead and go through the pictures. Up on the screen, you can see a picture of the front porch. The interior. Interior and side view. Also, those photos are within your packet. The property owner is requesting demolition. There's not currently a redevelopment activity tied to it, although he did say that he maybe will pursue redevelopment within the near future. The reason for demolition is, he states that the floor is rotting out. During the staff report, it's a single-family residential structure located at 623 Waverly Street. According to Midmo GIS, it was constructed in 1935. The property is not on the National Register, not a landmark award winner, nor is it within a local historic district or overlay district. The demolition does not go against any code we currently have, so it's staff recommendation that the HPC allows the demolition to move forward into the permitting process.
Any discussion on it, guys?
I move that we approve the demolition request.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, I need a second. Anybody?
I guess I'll second it.
Reluctantly?
Yes.
It can.
It can die.
It can die.
It can die.
And what would happen if it died? It would just go on through the permitting process and...
There would be an appeal process that the property owner could take to council.
It's up to you all.
Just as a matter, I mean, this house is not individually eligible for listing, but that area is worthy of survey. And there are historic homes, are interesting historic properties in that larger neighborhood. I don't know how that would fit into the larger one, but I guess that just goes to show that we need more survey in Jefferson City to know what is eligible.
What the, what else is there?
She asked if there's a streetscape photo on, in your, within your packet. There's the, the map is a little bit small, but there is the screenshot of the Midmo GIS.
It's the second house up from the back, and I think it was the auto parts store. I'm trying to remember what I pulled in next to.
I think it's, I thought it was the butcher shop.
The butcher shop's gone.
I know, but I thought it was...
It's not an empty lot, there's something in front of it.
There's, there's, there is an empty lot, and then there's a residential lot.
Is that Chipotle across the street?
It's right all along there.
So it's right, so it's near Chipotle, so when you're pulling out of Chipotle on Waverly...
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I see.
The parking lot behind it, good-sized parking lot, because that's where I pulled in to look at it. Further discussion? Intiff, are you making the motion, or are you not?
I withdraw my second.
So we do not have a second? Go ahead, Alan.
So what is, so I guess it's... Can we ask, so, so he said he's, the reason for him is... He's saying the flooring is bad in it?
And rather than replacing the flooring, he wants to just tear it down? Further discussion?
I mean, it's a nice residential area still, I mean...
With no second, the motion will die. And since we have none, the motion dies, and if you would pass that on to him. Under new biz, new business. Do we want to put that under new business, or discuss it during the preservation code?
I believe you adopted the agenda under other business, so...
Under other business, okay, I just wanted to make sure which we did it under, because I didn't hear any...
Before we advance, kind of visit a point of order, I guess. Basically, the motion died because there was no, there was no second. From a more practical standpoint, since the motion died, this really doesn't take it off the table. It actually sits it kind of in limbo. Would it not be better...
To deny it?
To basically vote on it, because in planning and zoning, when we were doing planning and zoning requests, it was always better to go ahead and have a positive motion, whether you wanted to do it or not. Do the positive motion, second it, and then actually vote on it, because then with the vote...
You can say no.
It is declined.
Gotcha.
Otherwise, right now, it's sitting in limbo.
I understand that.
So that's the, yes, that's the order I wanted to kind of discuss. Now, the risk, of course, is that if it gets seconded, it could be approved, depending on how the vote goes. But that's the... I just wanted to toss that out before we advance, so it's...
It's up, and again, it's up to this group. If you want to put it as a motion and then deny the motion, that is a possibility. Or it just is set aside.
If everybody's happy with the way it is, that's fine, too. I just wanted to toss that out there.
I would like to do that, I'd like to send it, I mean, would we make it stand? No?
Yeah, I mean, otherwise...
We can reconsider the motion.
I have to do a little bit of research into our demolition ordinance to see if we have the authority to...
To deny it?
We have the authority to deny. I just don't know that it's entirely clear what happens when the, when it doesn't.
Well, yeah, like I said, it's in limbo.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Councilwoman Ward had mentioned tabling it and then inviting the property owner here...
Now, tabling it would make more sense.
To question, and then I...
That's, again, that's a parliamentary procedure, that if this body wants to do that and specifically table it, they can do that and ask the person to come and talk about it.
Bring it back and revisit it and get the answer.
That's, that's totally up to you all.
And he had an invitation already, correct? He knew that he had a right to...
Yes, he'll get a, he'll get a notification that we were reviewing it for this meeting, but it wasn't of, because of its age, it wasn't a hearing process. So there wasn't a formal...
So...
So you need to find out specifically if we act on it, does it go to an appeal, or does it just die? What, what the next step for him would be?
Because tabling it, I mean, are we going to get any answers from him that we don't already have?
Already have. Because he already texted...
Yeah. So tabling it and bringing it back to us would not necessarily change our stance on it if the, if the desire would be to either, would be to, overall of the commission to deny it.
Correct.
So that's just delaying the process for him.
Correct. So at that point, again, the desire to table it, to vote, to have a motion and second, and vote it up, or have this motion second and vote it down? And then if it's voted down, then he has the right to appeal, as I understand it. And that's what Rachel's checking.
No, he definitely has the right to, to appeal. It's voted down, then he has the right to go to council and bring it forward there, and then council makes that decision.
That's what all the discussion was when this whole thing was written three years ago, four years ago. I'm sorry?
Okay, so, permit to demolish, review process. Applications for demolition shall be reviewed in accordance with the following. There's the application form, the utility disconnect, the stormwater, review by Historic Preservation Commission. Applications to demolish or remove a structure shall be subject to the review requirements and regulations contained in Section 8-43 pertaining to review of demolition permit proposals by the Historic Preservation Commission. Where a historic, historic preservation demolition clearance is required, issuance of a demolition permit shall not proceed prior to approval of historic preservation demolition clearance. Nothing in Section 8-43 shall be construed so as to prohibit the building official from acting under any emergency provisions of Chapter 8.
It doesn't have anything in there about the age.
There is a... Okay, here's the, the review of demolition proposals by Historic Preservation Commission. Okay. Demolition applications requiring Historic Preservation Commission review: structures greater than 50 years old, structures designated as a local landmark, structures listed on the National Register or within a National Register district. Greater than 50 for the demolition, the review. The clearance is for the over 100, or 100 or older. For applications for demolition requiring a historic preservation demolition clearance, a public hearing in accordance, so here's the public hearing for, for appeals pursued in accordance with Section 8-43. Aye. Public hearing in accordance shall be conducted prior to city council action on the appeal. So here's the review criteria, maybe this will be helpful. Review criteria: in reviewing an application for historic preservation demolition review or historic preservation demolition clearance, the following criteria shall be considered: whether the structure is a notable structure with respect to historic value by reason of its association with an event or events that significantly contribute to the broad patterns of history or architectural heritage of the city, county, state, or nation; its association with a life or lives of a person or persons significant in the history of the city, county, state, or nation; its embodiment of distinctive characteristics of a type, design, period, or method of construction; it represents the work of a master designer or architect, or possesses high architectural value; it exemplifies the cultural, political, economic, social, or historic heritage of the city; it contains elements of design, detail, material, or craftsmanship which represent a significant construction innovation; it is part of or related to a square, park, or other distinctive area that was or should be developed or preserved according to a plan based on historic or architectural motif; it is an established and familiar visual feature of a neighborhood or the entire community; or it has yielded or is likely to yield archaeological artifacts and/or information; whether the structure is a notable structure with respect to its demolition being detrimental to the visual or spatial relationship of the structure to designated landmarks, National Register sites, streetscape, or local historic district and National Register district.
Yes, this is on the website.
Well, so, on this one, under, see if you can follow along with me. Under section, it's Section 8-43G, decision maker. The Historic Preservation Commission shall review the application for demolition review or historic preservation demolition clearance, and shall approve or deny the application based on the applicable review criteria. The decision of the commission shall be documented, and the director shall notify the applicant in writing of the decision of the commission. I think you have to make a decision.
My point, yeah, I think we need to act on it, one way or the other. Or we can table it, to act on it at a later date. But I think it... I think we need to act on it, yeah, in one way or another.
But you're right. Yeah.
We can deny it, but it's not going to make any difference, is basically what it comes to.
Yeah, without seconding, he could just bring it up to the next meeting. And if we don't do it, act on it then, he can bring up the meeting after that, he can just keep on going, so it just...
In 50 years.
Also, under the same section, E-2, applications requiring historic preservation demolition review, the HPC shall review applications for demolition permit review that do not require historic preservation demolition clearance within 75 days of receipt of a complete application by the director or within two regularly scheduled meetings, which is fine. If the Historic Preservation Commission does not take action on the application within the review period, the application is deemed approved. I mean, we're taking action on it, so it's not...
Well, if we don't, though, as Mike said, if we don't take action on it, it goes through anyway.
I believe that's correct.
So if, if the, if the commission wants to say, no, we really don't want to see it done, then we have to vote no, is what it comes to. Yeah. Exactly.
Right.
So, do you want to reconsider what's going on? As far as motion?
Well, what I will do is I'll, I'll put the motion back into...
And that can be done?
How else should I say that? Redo the motion, yeah.
Yeah, you just make a new motion.
I'll make a new motion that, that we approve the demolition request for 623 Waverly Street.
And do I have a...
Okay, so I will second it, as it came out.
Okay. And Gail, I can't see you right now. Are you consistent with what's going on? Keep it up, okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the demolition request for seven, I'm sorry, 623 Waverly Street. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no.
No.
No. Okay, the motion has been denied.
Good, now we're back.
Gotcha.
Okay, I'm happy now.
Thank you, Mike. Well, and I try to do it as the presiding person, not supposed to.
Right, right.
But, well, behave myself. Okay, Historic Preservation Code Revision Committee update. Rachel, would you like to share what happened at the meeting?
I would like you to share what happened at the meeting.
Okay. Basically, we did address one particular item, and I... Basically, uh, we did address one particular item, and I don't have it, this is not here in front of me. See if I can remember how it was stated. We're doing consensus, it's not by motion or anything, uh, at the request of the legal team, but we did approve that a his, a local historic landmark can be applied for, by, or not recommended for, uh, historic local district by HPC, city council, or someone who lives with, is a homeowner and, or a property owner in that area. We did that specifically to address the needs of the area down in the foot, so that that can be processed by folks who have property in the area, or had property in the area. And it'll take care of some questions on whether the foot can be local register, local district, and so forth. That was the primary event of the night. Didn't really have anything else happen. We did, we were able to get that passed, so hopefully in the future, the discussion of the foot will wait until we get through the whole process. Uh, and it was specifically told, um, to persons who are interested in that, that this is an eighteen-month process, so it's going to be eighteen months till we're finished. And I think it's going to go forward from now on, I'm hoping it does. I don't know if there was any reaction after the fact, or?
No, I think it was, I think it was positive, and just to, to add to, in our current code, getting a local historic district requires seventy-five percent of the property owners to sign off on participation. Um, and that was a concern of the, of the committee, and so they eliminated the percentage of property owners and made it a public hearing process, much like you do with a zoning case. So there would be a, a public engagement process, and then, then, so we wrote that up, and then our, our attorney was like, well, does that mean that anybody could apply for a, a local historic district regardless of where they live, or?
That's how that, yeah.
Yeah, so that was where we steered.
Wrote it specific.
Correct.
So that's our accomplishment, for that one hour. Well, it's more than we had gotten done before, so, and, and that line for us, what we're going to do on each meeting, so I think it will progress at this point, I'm hoping it does. We have a group that's very interested in it. We did have something that came up during that, and I'll go ahead and, since that's part of that discussion, bring this up, and it's what, we had the amendment to our agenda about the procedure for reviewing the designation of landmark or historic districts on building permit standards. It's actually been written, and this has existed ever since we've had landmark award, however, people who have applied for the landmark award have not been aware of this. But it basically says, after a landmark or historic district is designated by ordinance, each application from building permit for that area or that particular landmark has to be reviewed by the HPC. People are not aware of that. I mean, I've got two landmark buildings, and I didn't even know about it until we started going through the ordinances. You didn't know it with your building, did you?
Well, the house I did have, I asked that question, I would not accept it because I could not get a straight answer.
Okay, well now you have a straight answer. Well, and. Well, and it's, yeah, and we're going to have to, yeah. And that's the reason we're redoing the ordinances, but when we go to do landmark awards this year, we're going to have to make sure folks are aware of this.
Yes, it does say, but I don't, I don't think.
But it didn't. But it doesn't, but the way it was written, it didn't make the impact that people.
Well, and I always, I think it's, in historically been packaged as a, a recognition, an honorary, but there, it is, but there are also some, some, you know, land use ties that go with it, and I don't, I was surprised when people were surprised, uh, just when I read it, we took it as, well, if you want to do something to your building that requires you to pull a pill, permit, that's going to be a trigger, that your building has to go through a review process.
And I, and personally, I have done things to my building and had a building permit, and it did not go through that process. Yeah, but I'm, I'm, that's what I'm talking about. You know, to the house that I'm living in, we completely had to redo the backend of it and everything, and, yeah, when they did the building permit, and it never went through HPC. So. So it's something we're going to have to make sure that people are aware of, you know, and there's no, there's no processes. Well, that too.
That's, that's correct, and, and something else, um, came up, is, it's also not being made clear in like, in real estate transactions. So, we, one of the things that the committee is, is thinking about is, is putting some sort of deed covenant on there, on the property, to make sure that as it, as the property changes hands over time, that it's, that people know about it.
Go ahead. It's part of this discussion, and we need to get it out because we're going to have it. Well, and we've got a perfect example of that, Steve just sold the seminary building on State Street, and I was talking to the new owner, and he's all excited, you know, he's got this landmark award, and he's got this thing, and he's got all kinds of ideas to do it, and I did not tell him. Guess what you just got?
Well, i- it's, it's, it's not a big.
It's not a big deal, but. Should.
That's what you hope, yeah.
I think one of the ways to address it is, how, how I do in real estate is, is, you know, it's to protect your property, the properties around you.
Exactly.
And that's more the way to, I think, the, to, it's the way it should be addressed. Instead of taking a single, what should be a single family and turn it into a multifamily, you know, you need to look at it as, you're protecting the historic value of the property.
Exactly.
And the, um. Well, and just in some of the updates that we're going to do to MIMO GIS, and then maybe a place to put that, along with some of the other information we're going to be putting in for the digitizing, you know, and get it marked, so realtors are aware of it, too, because a lot of them are not aware, and it's an education process. Yeah, I know. Been there, done that.
I didn't see anything.
But again, we wanted to, because it came up in three of our ordinance meetings, all three of them, we wanted to make sure that this group knew about it and knew that, you know, with the landmark award coming up this fall, or this spring, we're going to have to make sure people are aware of it. Alan, who started saying?
So what happens if they do not follow that, they lose their landmark award?
We don't think, I think in place is the part, part of the issue.
On the federal, you know, if it's a, if it's a marked federal, you know, um, on the federal registry, you know, if somebody, if somebody does not follow that, and they get reported, they just can lose it.
But I don't think there's anything.
Your neighbor's house. How I found that out is your neighbor's house. It is, but that was something that came up, though, where it was, whenever I had it on the market, because there were, there were things about it that was a problem for people purchasing it, and that was a question of what happened. Well, what it was, is putting change, putting like a driveway up the side and. There was something with that, and something else, they wanted to put another structure on the side of it, though. Exactly, but this would be changing the character of something. But that's the worst that would happen, is they would lose that.
Right.
Yeah, it wasn't like they were going to come and sue them. And it's if it gets reported.
Rachel, is there anything in the, there is no repercussion, is there? That we, I knew when we looked at it before, we couldn't find anything.
I, I don't, I do not see an enforcement measure, no.
Same. But we still need to make people aware of it.
Sure. And they think that they're going to have to, they're going to have to put, you know, the plaster back in, or, you know, which, which, if you're not doing, it's going to cost.
Gotcha. Okay, any other discussion on the landmark issue, or on the ordinance? Okay, our next order of other business is Historic Preservation Fund Grants, Rachel?
Uh, yes, so we submitted a Historic Preservation Fund grant, well Carly, Carly did all the work, um, for design guidelines, uh, so that puts a, a hurry up on our code revision. Also, for the West Main Phase Three, it would be the Jefferson Heights, Wolf's, Carlin's Edition, and High Point Place subdivisions. Do we, there's a map in, on the presentation? Yes, there it is. Thanks Carly, you're the best. So this would be the extension. So the current, the current project is the Water Works and Lower Jefferson, so it's that little, almost a J off of, off of West Main. And so we took that, and then we're just continuing on down the line. We did jump across the street a little bit to kind of capture those larger homes that are on West Main, they're not within a subdivision, they were just developed independently.
Any questions for Rachel on that? Okay, anything else that you want to share on it, Rachel?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay. Our next item is Preservation Month, May twenty-two.
Yes, um, what do you guys want to do for Preservation Month in May of twenty-two? Also a reminder that in June of twenty-twenty-two, um, we are, Jefferson City is hosting the State Historic Preservation Conference. So I feel like we should do stuff. And every time, um, you know, we, we took the Gregory Stockard Award and gave that back to Historic City of Jefferson, um, we do have a five-hundred-dollar budget, we could.
And we will be doing, HCJ will be doing their Preservation Month luncheon slash dinner, whatever it's going to be this next year, depending on how the world is by then. But we will be doing that, and we will be presenting the awards, our volunteer awards and everything else at that time as well. And we can work with it. Yeah, we've got the hundred-year-old yards, the century-old building yard signs that we'll be redoing again this year. We are working with the, uh, Preservation, Missouri Preservation on the conference itself. Probably, we're, if we get to revive what we were looking at doing last year, then we will probably be doing a similar church tour to what we did this year for the, for the Homes Tour. We're also going to do some other various tours of the historic buildings and different things along those lines. So it's kind of open as far as, you know, if HPC wants to do some things during the month of May and feed into this, because the conference itself is the first week in June, so it'll be right into, going straight into the conference itself. I mean, we can do everything from, and we kind of brainstormed a little bit, but anything from holding open training sessions, if you will, to tell people what historic buildings are, and what all this stuff is that we work with to unscare them, do some things with the realtors, you know, there's a lot of things that can be done, we just, it's open to what y'all want to see done. Maybe this should be a special brainstorming session outside of the council me, or commission meeting. How do you feel about it?
Can we think about it a little bit?
Uh, yes, we will put it on next month's agenda.
But just, just, yeah. We can do that. I think that was a question.
There's actually a count, um, but we don't have access to it, so, um, I think Kathy Bonner still has access to it, so if the commission wants to get access back.
Ordinor.
Oh, boarder. Sorry.
I did not, yeah, I did not even know we had one. It's one of the ideas we could do it? Yeah, because we want everybody to, oh, the entire commission to participate in this, so that it's not just Rachel doing it, or not just one of us, you know, we need everybody doing this. We've done enough of those. Yep. I'm sorry. Oh, we could do that online, yeah. As we've been doing for the Missouri Bicentennial. Yeah, we've done a lot of those. Anyway, brainstorm, think about it, we'll bring it back up, and we'll start compiling a list of ideas, we've got seven months to work on it, so give us some time. Okay, any other business to come before the commission? Anybody else have any updates, anything else to share? If not, next meeting will be November ninth. Yeah, it was just on the, just to let you guys know what was going on with that. It's okay, Tiff, we understand, it's been a long day. Yeah, I know, it's only Tuesday. I know, it's only Tuesday. Yeah, because we were already discussing as part of the ordinance meeting, sorry about that, darling. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alan, Mike. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Gail. Bye.
Bye, Gail.
Sure.